If we could all rise and pledge allegiance to the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Baldini?
Here.
Commissioner Campanzi?
Here.
Commissioner Conley?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Coin?
Here. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move the agenda reapproved.
Commissioner Conley?
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
None.
All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Okay, that motion passes. Announcement? I have no announcements other than welcome. Appreciate your coming. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Just for those of you who have not had the great pleasure of being here before, to describe to you public comment is anyone is free to speak for three minutes. If you come to that microphone over in the corner there and state your name, city, or township of residence, and address, you have three minutes. And you'll be able to see the three-minute sign over there. The green light will start at three minutes. The yellow light will go on when there's one minute left. And it'll start blinking when you have 30 seconds, the red one, and then it'll be on for stopping. So, anyone wishing to come forward or reserve time to speak on an agenda item, which is kind of silly because we only have one agenda item, so you can speak what you want to on this. And you, being that all of you, probably most of you, have had some involvement in this, we, the commission, may call on you by name and ask you to come up and answer a question, so be prepared. You don't have to come up and say, "I'm ready to answer questions," because we're going to ask you questions anyway. So, anyone wishing to come forward and make any comment for three minutes?
Bob Campanzi, 306 North Sixth Street, City of Marquette. I was here for the previous work session, and I guess it was good to hear some of those things. There's still an awful lot of questions that aren't answered. Going through that whole process over the last three years, there were some things, I said, which really seemed crazy, such as tearing down a 23-year-old, perfectly viable, functioning Department of Public Works building to accomplish building a new hospital on that site. It's one of the, it's a state law, I guess, Brownfield law, whatever, so I can't really stand here and argue about it. Still seems kind of crazy. You know, if they were still sitting out there at the old site on Wright Street where they're going to be moving back to a quarter mile away, apparently, you can see tearing that building down. Going beyond that, I think the biggest thing is you need to involve the community. And I think you guys have heard that. I think the mayor, the commission knows that. I know Mayor Protem Campana has said that a number of times. When are we going to involve the community? The community really hasn't been involved to now. They're out there in the dark with the rumors and everything else flying around. And what a forum is, is something that's done before the plans are really finalized. You don't have final plans and then come to the community and say, "Well, let's have our forum now," because that's a little bit too late. And one of the biggest items, and former Mayor Neamey is sitting right there, and we had a kind of a warm discussion one night about the bridge over the highway at Grove Street. And that really needs community involvement. Anybody that's driven through that intersection know there's an awful lot of traffic through there, a lot of attorney movements, and it really is going to take a lot of thought before anything like that is done. So, let's do what you said you're going to do, and let's involve the community.
Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak at public comment? Seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to close public comment, and we'll move on to the first agenda item, which is the consent agenda, approving the minutes of July 27, 2015. Is there a motion to do so? Mr. Campana?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as stated.
Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
Discussion, Commissioner Campanzi?
For the record, I'd like to state that I will be voting no for the following reasons. If I could have these in the minutes. The first reason is that DLP does not have their certificate of need yet to build the hospital from the state. The second reason is that the public needs to know the total value, total assessed value of the service center buildings and land. They need to know what they're shooting at.
Excuse me. Is this regarding the consent agenda? That's what we're talking about.
I'm sorry.
There was a point of order here, so you want to hold off on that?
No, thank you. I'll hold off. Thank you.
Okay. I feel your pain, having done that before myself, so. Any further discussion on the consent agenda approval? Seeing none, please say yes. In favor?
Yes.
Opposed? No. Okay, now, new business. Madam Clerk, could you read the agenda item, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Background. On September 1, 2012, Duke LifePoint finalized agreement with the Marquette General Health System Board to acquire Market General Hospital. Under the agreement as approved by Michigan Attorney General Bill Schute, DLP committed to several post-implementation actions, including investment of a minimum of $300 million in capital improvements over 10 years. On September 9, 2013, DLP announced plans to build a new state-of-the-art hospital and initiated a site selection effort encompassing the City of Marquette and surrounding areas. On February 24, 2014, Mayor Robert Neamey and Commissioners Don Ryan and Sarah Campanzi were appointed to the Duke LifePoint-Marquette General Health System Negotiation Subcommittee. The subcommittee and staff worked tirelessly to propose an agreement for retaining the hospital within the city, and after a year of deliberations and negotiations on September 8, 2014, successfully concluded a memorandum of understanding, MOU, wherein Duke LifePoint agreed to relocate Market General Hospital to the municipal service center Roundhouse properties in Marquette. The MOU contains terms by which Duke LifePoint would pay the city $4 million for the 37 acres of land containing the Roundhouse site and the property on which the municipal service center stands. City staff and the Market-Brownfield Redevelopment Authority worked with DLP to pursue Brownfield Economic Development Centers for construction of infrastructure necessary to relocate the Market Municipal Service Center, as well as to improve site utilities and road access. Representatives of the city, MBRA, DLP, and elected officials provided testimony before the Michigan Strategic Fund Board, and on February 24, 2015, Michigan Economic Development Corporation Chief Steve Arwood announced approval of the project to include MSF-approved $55,763, $55,763,061 in local and school tax captured for the City of Marquette-Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to redevelop approximately 37 acres of property in the City of Marquette. The project will consist of demolition of existing structures on the site and construction of the new regional acute care DLP Market General Hospital, an affiliate of Duke LifePoint Healthcare. The completed project will also include medical office buildings and a parking deck. Purchase agreement is required by the MOU to initiate all subsequent construction activities. Negotiation regarding a subsequent MBRA-City-DLP development agreement will be initiated as required by the Brownfield process. Fiscal effect, the city will receive $4 million as a result of the property sale. The project will generate a million, minimum total capital investment of $170 million and create 150 new jobs, as well as retain 2,300 jobs. Recommendation: Approve the real estate purchase and sales agreement with DLP Market General Hospital LLC. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. A motion would be appropriate. Commissioner Conley?
I move we approve the real estate purchase and sale agreement with Duke LifePoint-Marquette General Hospital LLC.
Is there support to that? Commissioner Baldini?
Support.
Commissioner Conley, any comments?
None further.
Commissioner Baldini?
I would like to comment, because we were at the work session, many of the people weren't here. I think we've had enough discussion over three years now. It's a significant event for the city. It keeps, it maintains our health services, which have become really a mainstay of the Upper Peninsula and for ourselves, and plus, it's going to really be urban renewal for our downtown area. It's a significant event. It's a historical event, I believe, for the City of Marquette, and the fact that the hospital is here, prepared to invest this kind of money in our community, I just think is a great thing for our community. A lot of things are going to have to be done between now and then, but we just have to do them, and they'll get done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Campanzi?
Try this again. I'm going to vote no on this project, and I would like the following reasons document this, as to why. My first one is DLP does not currently have their certificate of need from the State of Michigan. They stated this is expected in September. The public needs to know the total appraised value of the service center buildings and land that we are negotiating with DLP, so that they know exactly what's at stake. And three, there have been no public forums on the project as a whole. If we don't have input from the public, there are no checks and balances. At the work session, it was stated that December 31 is the deadline to make the appropriate payments for bond council entering into the agreements. I think we have time for some work sessions. I think it would only be the responsible thing for us to do is to try and fit some of those work sessions in now, so that we can get that feedback.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Mr. Frazier?
I think this is a good thing for the city. I think this is more about the purchase and the sale agreement, which I think is important to the city. I think you guys will have public forums where it comes to the technical part of the hospital, the building, the building layout and all that stuff, and, you know, that's down the road a little bit, and like other commissioners said, there's stuff about the bridges and the roundabouts and all that's in the contract but not binding by any means. So, I think it's important people to remember this is just the, so they can get the land purchased and get the ball rolling on all the other paperwork that has to be done. And there'll be more discussion, more meetings about this in the future, and I think they'll be all tied into your public comment and stuff like that on the actual building and stuff like that, which I think is more important to people than anything, so.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a couple comments. Some of this is perhaps repetitive, because some of what I said and others have said was discussed at the work session. But first, I would like to thank the numerous groups of people and organizations who have worked for a year on this negotiation to purchase and to sell property. This is much more complicated than just somebody buying an empty lot. Each party, Duke LifePoint and the city, had to look after their interests, which we had a very good team of a city manager and five attorneys representing the city to attempt to negotiate with Duke LifePoint. Duke LifePoint had a team of attorneys and administrators, and in a year's time, I think both of them, because Duke LifePoint has signed this agreement already, have agreed that mutual interests on both parts have been negotiated and are satisfactory to the administration and the legal teams of both. And this didn't happen just by public forum. You cannot negotiate contracts with public forums. That's just impossible. You have to do it the way we did it. And nowhere in the memorandum of understanding was there any agreement of public forums to work on negotiating the contract. That's just impossible, and it wasn't in there. Particularly, I want to thank the Attorney General of the State of Michigan for working diligently and surprisingly rapidly to get this deal initially going and then being supportive of it. The Brownfield and their staff and their director, and the directors, the Board of Light and Power. I mean, this land, and just not just buying the land, you have to have a whole bunch of water, sewer, and electricity that is much more than just a house. So, it was a lot of work and a lot of cooperation on their parts. Five city attorneys, Duke LifePoint attorneys and their officers, both here and in Tennessee, the city manager, the city department heads, who all worked very hard on this. In particular, I want to shout out to former Mayor Neamey and DePietro, who were involved in this from the very start. And I just, I'll diverse for a minute, digress for a minute. I think the importance of this is represented because we have Buzz Bearby, Tom Turville, John Kivala, Bob Neamey, Johnny DePietro, and myself, as all former mayors who are here because this is such a momentous purchase and such a big thing for this city as it is for Duke LifePoint. I think they recognize the magnitude of what they're undertaking. I had a time, I think last evening, to talk to Mr. Butler, who is here from Duke LifePoint, and we were trying to find, the typical question that folks always ask is, "Why is the UP not part of Wisconsin?" And guess what? He asked that. That was shortly after I was trying to get him to go swimming in Lake Superior, and he is from Nashville. And interestingly, in a conversation, we found a real common bond here, that the State of Michigan came into existence when President Andrew Jackson signed that law. And guess where he's from? Nashville. So, we're repeating our history here. Great, old Hickory, let Michigan exist, and we do have a connection. And you've been very gracious to work with. Appreciate your coming. Do you have anything you would like to say? I'm going to call on you if you have anything to say. You can come up there. If you don't, that's okay, too. And I apologize for your attorney being stuck in Chicago, not being able to get here on an airplane, so that never happens here.[1025.13][1025.13](Laughter).
I just want to thank everybody and all the efforts, and especially that we developed a partnership with the city and want to work with the community and the city on going forward. This is very historic. I can actually reminisce and say that on this day a year ago, I got a call to ask to get involved in this project. And I feel very humbled and respectful that I was allowed to work on this. And I think all of us in the room recognize what this is going to do for the community. Because one, when we developed a partnership with Duke, with LifePoint, it was all about improving the quality to our patients. And then when we developed a partnership with the city and the commissioners here, we're actually going to take health care to another level. And I have to say it, we want to create a place where physicians want to practice, employees have a great place to work, and our community and our patients are taken care of here in the UP. And thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners wishing to say anything? If not, I'm going to call for the vote. But this has to be a roll call vote, and I am extremely proud of myself for remembering that, because I have never remembered that in about a year, that these have to be roll call votes. But about 50 people have reminded me. So, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baldini?
Yes.
Commissioner Campanzi?
No.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds? Commissioner, excuse me, Mayor Protem Campana?
Yes.
Mayor Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Six to one. Thank you. Now, it's generally tradition, after we're finished with the agenda, to have commissioners make any comments if they wish. I'll start with Commissioner Campana.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just really glad to see this agreement come to us, come before us tonight. As complex as it is, it's just a small part of it, and, you know, we have the development agreement coming next, plus many other things. But, you know, you can't finish a project unless you start it, and it's very important that we get started. You can't plan it from start to finish. You've just got to do it as you go, hope that you're following the correct line, and I think we're doing that here. I think we have two good, you know, Duke LifePoint is very, very willing to work with us, and we have city administration that's working very hard on this, and this is going to, you know, for Marquette, it's going to be a huge turning point. It's very, you know, it's going to be something that we look back on, and it's going to be a big accomplishment. It's going to bring the city forward. It's going to be big, not just for the city, but for, you know, the county, the entire UP. So, this is a big, big moment for us, and I'm very happy to see it happen. Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
I too am happy to see this agreement go through. I think it's good for the city. Happy to see the people from Tennessee back up here. We got a chance to meet them earlier in the year, and everything went good. Hope things go through well, and joking with them in between minutes on the white, took a year to sign 17 pages, but I guess the lawyers got involved, and yeah, I see more. But, anyway, I got a chance to go overseas and see how other countries deal with everything, and it's interesting to see Marquette's kind of making steps towards what other countries do. Biking is a big part of some of the countries I got to see, and I think we put a lot of emphasis on parking and cars, and other countries don't deal with the parking issues. They ride bikes or they walk. I mean, they have whole streets that are just walking only. One of the countries that finished, like, the longest strip of stores or something like that, that you can only walk on, and it's just amazing. And these countries got the same weather as we do, and it's just crazy to see people biking to work in their work clothes and stuff like that, so it's good to see. But, good to get back in the United States, and sorry I missed the two weeks of summer, but, oh, well, hopefully we get more.
Thank you. Commissioner Campanzi?
Thank you. Well, as commissioners, sometimes we often disagree, and, you know, our memorandum of understanding has been public since September of 2014, and I think we have had ample time to discuss what's in that memorandum of understanding, which much of that is in this purchase agreement. So, I do think we have had an opportunity to get out to the public, and we haven't done that. And so, you know, my no vote with a $53 million project ahead of us, I think we needed some more public input, and I don't think we quite have that, as well as just the time, maybe with some people who have some questions, to really answer those. And I think for taxpayers, you know, we're signing on for this risk, and I just wish we would have had that opportunity. Thank you.
Commissioner Conley?
And this is an important milestone in the road to keeping health care here in the City of Marquette that started with the memorandum of understanding. There's a few more agreements, and there's a whole lot of work. This document and our session tonight represents a lot of work on both sides, and I want to thank our team, city manager, our department heads, who have put in tremendous time, and also can look forward to a lot more time as this develops. But I think it's going to be worth it. I want to thank the Duke LifePoint team for their work and holding up their part of this and bringing this back to us and allowing it to go forward. We look forward to our continued relationship, our good relationship, and again, we look forward to an excellent health care facility and continued excellent health care here in the City of Marquette. So, thanks again.
Commissioner Baldini?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think we've made our comments already about thanking the staff, our staff, and they have a lot of work in front of them to meet our deadlines, and I think they're capable of doing that, and Duke LifePoint for its commitment to the community also. It is a significant time for our community. I mean, we're very proud of the things that are going on in our community, and this is obviously a major historical point for the community, moving the hospital from where it is to its new site, which will revitalize that part of town. And there will be a lot of questions and a lot of comments and probably disagreements as we move forward for the next three years. But Commissioner Campanzi said, if, you know, we're not going to finish until we start, so we have to start. And I think this is a major, a major positive point for our area, and really the region in the Upper Peninsula.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Actually, don't have anything further.
Really? Okay. Well, that leaves more time for me then, okay? I just have a few remarks. First, I want to thank everybody for coming this evening. I really appreciate it. And in my remarks, a long list of people that I thanked. I left out one group, and that's the MEDC. Without them and without the Brownfield, this would not happen, plain and simple. I mean, it's not economically feasible without that. And it pains me, but I have to thank Representative Kivala very much for his help, okay, because I'll pay for that. But thank you, John, very much, okay? Appreciate it. And just to put things in perspective, I'm not going to repeat everything that was said, but to put this in perspective, the value of the properties in the Marquette are about $1 billion, okay, approximately. And this is, by the time this gets finished, it's probably going to represent about a half a billion dollars, billion dollars, in terms of the development of the hospital, all the things that are going to happen because of that. And that represents a 50% increase in the value of this city. That's unbelievable, this one property. So, I think that really shows the importance of this. I think the comment about the work to be done is astronomical between now and the end of the year. But none of this would have happened, frankly, without the city manager whipping everybody to do this, and a special thanks to you for getting this done. And any comments? I'm finished. Do you have any comments? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, I only wanted to do really two things. First is, we'll have a signing ceremony immediately following the meeting, and I'll ask our city clerk to help coordinate that, so we might take a moment to let the media get a good photo angle for it to capture for posterity. But for me, that was really the only thing I wanted to speak to was posterity. You know, thinking about this moment, and I think your thoughts on the matter, sir, are spot on. We started off our annual budget cycle, it starts off every year with our accountant and our auditor coming in and telling us what the financial state of the city is. And three years ago, we were looking at a point in time when our major cluster, our health care cluster, was on the verge of collapse. It was a not-profitable nonprofit, potentially struggling. We had gotten our first announcement of the closure of the power plants as a result of the EPA rules on coal emissions. We'd started seeing the first of our tribunal cases, we're eating into the value of the property. Things looked pretty dire for Marquette about three years ago, and now flash forward today, speaking to the people really in the audience, not here in the room but on TV, as you noticed, sir, we have six mayors present. We have at least one other former commissioner, who's now the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce here, who maintains his interest in seeing the community move forward. We have representatives of the BLP, the Brownfield, of course, DLP, our Local Development Finance Authority, another group that's dedicated trying to help Marquette grow. We have our Downtown Development Authority, of course, all of the department heads and staff who've been working here. A city attorney has done yeoman's work with his staff and with our consultants, making sure that the form of the agreement is completely compliant with all the laws that we have to focus on. And I also wanted to note, just from a historical perspective, we have a direct descendant of Peter White sitting on the panel with you this evening, and we also have probably our historically most successful financier to ever come out of Marquette, the family that helped finance the construction of the Empire State Building, joining us this evening to observe what's going on here. It's not every day that we increase the base value of the city by 50%, and it's something we wanted to make sure we could capture for posterity. So, I hope for the signing ceremony, people stick around, maybe have an opportunity to chat. I know there's a lot of interest in meeting the people from DLP. I'm hoping that we'll see a lot more of them over the course of the next three years. But I'd just like to say thank you to the commission for all the support. I know the representatives change every year, but the continuity of that project has carried forward, and I'm confident that we're going to be reaping the benefits for years to come.
Well, thank you. And again, thank you for coming all this way, and all of you for coming, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.